Okay, it's Monday May 25th, 10 o'clock. Call meeting, door, roll call, smiling.
Right.
Start.
Yep.
Door here. Number four. Kristi. Number four, discussion of possible action regarding the proclamation of OHCE.
I was also sure if you were ready for us yet. I think Carol's in here.
He did. We saw it immediately.
Good morning.
You're up.
A big crowd.
Good morning, I'm Dr. Rooney.
I know, that's what I was gonna say.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Picture for us.
Sure.
Phone call.
I was gonna take a picture.
I can tell it for you so you can be in it.
Yes. I'm here for something. I'm here for the water. Sure.
John, you're in the picture. I'll get out.
I don't want you guys to get it. No, no, we should do it in the picture. We want you guys to get it too.
Should've been case of John.
You got to sit over there.
Sit down, John.
Yourself?
Yeah, when we were sitting, it looked really easy.
What do you like to sit in?
Oh, no.
Because he needs to sit there.
We got things to do.
I don't think we need to.
I don't mind to be commissioner, so we'll sit here. My role is okay.
I can get right to it.
Oh my gosh. All standing, you're lined up there.
Yeah, that would be better in the picture.
Come on, leave her alone. Hold on, that's all right. Gosh.
Now we got lots of.
Okay, everybody look here. Right here, and on three, we'll take the picture. One, two, three. Okay, one more, let's look nice and happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a shower this morning? Yesterday was the Woods County OHCE Week. And in case you're not familiar with what OHCE is, we brought you a little brochure. But basically, it used to be known as Extension Homemakers. But we've evolved a little bit beyond that. And that's Oklahoma Home and Community Education Program. Some people like to say it's like 4H for adults. A lot of educational activities and community service is one of our biggest goals. And we have a lot of fun too. But we appreciate you recognizing OHCE Week in Woods County. And generally, we have you sign the proclamation. Oh, we have something. Who wants to get it? Something from one of our groups, just to say thank you for supporting us. Homemade, I add.
There you go. That's a Bible for common.
Three, two, one.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, now is the time. Go ahead. So anyway, homemade banana bread. Do you have any questions about what we've been up to? Yes, the cutest.
Doctor.
Caitlin. Three.
There, my other ones. Caitlin's been a member of OHCE for a few years. As you can see, we've got all different ages. It's not just for us mature ladies. We'd like some younger people to be involved. So anyway, we appreciate your support.
Thank you all.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you guys.
Enjoy your banana bread.
We'll get them signed. We will.
Maybe even have some coffee with that.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Are you two ready?
Number five, approval.
I'll give it on a bowl. Oh, true.
I did. I did.
Did you get the picture? They don't make it work.
Number six, approve, disapprove, nothing, or force for the following assessment. Fourth word, Department of Election Board.
That was a really good showing.
Second, all in favor? Number seven, discussion of possible action regarding monthly procreation. Does Dan all around? That's jazz. This is what we have. These are all the office. Not the preparation. This is the parks and the jail. You there?
Yeah.
Number eight, approval of letter from the sheriff's thing?
No.
No.
Not the preparation.
We didn't get it. Preparation.
Yeah, we didn't get it. And sorry, I didn't get a motion.
I'm not sure.
Here we are, Anna, here we are.
You make the motion, you said.
I'll say it.
Okay.
All in favor? All right.
So you got it, some, all of those here. Remember, not here. Here, at the X.
If you had hair, it'd be easier. What is 30 degrees in here? This stuff where it's stuck and has to sunburn here.
Is upside down? No.
Still work for me?
I do a lot of things up here. It's crazy. I think I'm looking at it right. I'm not. Hold on. Yeah, you're good. No, 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 no.
No, what was it?
Huh?
One third full.
Yeah.
Okay. Number eight, approval of letter from the sheriff's thing. The home mess has been appointed.
As of May 1st. Just letting you guys know.
I'll make it. Second, all in favor?
I'm not sure. God.
Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding the requisition officers for the sheriff's office. The new date of demand is an ad on this. So the...
I'll say it.
All in favor? Number 10, discussion of possible action regarding the road crossing permits required for all services.
Okay. It is located 232413 and 352413. And...
Oh.
Water. That's yours, right?
I hope. That's about all the places he's had. We had to, and he's down in there. He ain't nobody's rig or anything. Have you got a reason there?
No, clearly not.
There's a couple of locations though. The news.
Yeah.
Temporary line, I guess they're not more or anything, so it's no money.
Yeah, that's it.
There it is.
We need a motion. So move.
Okay.
Second, all in favor? All right. Number 11, discussion of possible action regarding the bid number 24-25-11. Painting inside the water tower for rural water district number three re grant WD-25-5.
She got one bid for each one.
Okay, is it number five?
This is 11.
Yeah, that's 11.
Yep. So 11, which is the Winoka Tower.
11 through 16, are they in different water towers?
Yes.
Yes.
And this bid will cover all of them?
No.
Or just room one?
He turned, they turned one as for each one.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
They just needed this one. Yep. For the Winoka Tower, their bid price was $17,375. And it's one wire iron.
That blonde? Is it orangey or...?
Seventeen what?
$17,375.
Just one?
Yes.
So move.
Well, all right.
Yes.
Okay.
You ever give it that?
Yep.
Is that kind of what you guys were expecting?
What's that?
Is that the number you were expecting?
That was exactly the numbers that I had.
I'll say it.
All in favor? That could be the number one. All right. Motion's up, all in favor?
All right.
All right, same company, this is for the...
Why are we painting the inside of the water tower? Coat it. Brush it. Last one standing.
The tanks were put in in the 80s. And this will be the first time they're painted on the inside. The outside's been painted three times. And this will be the first time that they're painting the inside. And the reason that they haven't done it is it's kind of an obstacle. Because we don't have a way to keep water going to the customers if we shut down one of them. So we have a bid in here for like a bypass tank, so that they can keep our system going. So...
Is that off of number 11?
Yes.
Number 12, discussion of possible action regarding the bid number 24-25-12. Painting inside the water tower for rural water district number three re grant WD-25-5.
This is 12 for the West Tower.
So do they anticipate time for it from start to finish on each one of them?
Less than 30 days.
We've done it. It's been a couple of years ago, we've done one.
It's the same price. $70,000 for dinner, $75. Those two towers are the same size. The next two towers will have different prices because they're larger.
I make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion, I'll say that.
All in favor? All right. District 13, discussion of possible action regarding the bid number 24-25-13. Painting inside the water tower for rural water district number three re grant WD-25-5.
This one is Oshel Tower.
Oshel?
O-S-H-E-L.
Ocean.
Ocean.
Ocean. We're outside.
That one is $35,575.
Any more questions or approval?
I'll say it. All in favor?
I'm not.
Number 14, discussion of possible action regarding the bid number 24-25-14. Painting inside the water tower for rural water district number three re grant WD-25-5.
This is North Tower.
Is this all coming out of one, three grand?
Mm-hmm, that's what I got. I better try and do that.
$75, probably down. Or it probably is closer to that, yeah.
Yeah, we're $70,000 right now, so we might...
We're gonna go over and everything else, we're gonna pay for.
Oh, okay.
Out of pocket.
Okay, so did you have that?
Yeah, yeah, I think it was like for $105,000 to paint all four towers. The only...
You not got that on there, only re grant?
Yeah.
So we do that.
Okay, good. All right, for the North Tower, it is $27,175.
Is that what you were thinking?
Yes, sir.
I'm thinking motion approved.
Do you send wishes with that?
No.
I'll say it, yeah.
All in favor? Two.
That was the north.
All right. On the arm or not?
No, wait. I'm saying. So we've got five grand left to put with that? And then they're gonna pick up the rest?
Mm-hmm.
And if it's, as long as it's in that re grant bid and she says it is, then that's acceptable.
Okay, that's what I was here.
Yeah, was it.
Number 15, discussion of possible action regarding bid number 24-25-15. Temporary water tower for rural water district re grant. That's the tank you were talking about?
Yes. So they'll paint a tower, use this tank, and then they'll move it to the next location. And it'll, so we only have to, it's like a rental on a tank.
Well, it's serviceable. Is it as big as what's there?
No, no, it is, it's a temporary.
You have to keep them loaded.
That one is $12,350.
For...
The rental.
Rental.
And that rented for how long? Or should be through the duration of...
Yeah, for, yes, it's in here for as long as it takes for the extension.
But not now.
I'll say it.
All in favor? All right. You good? Thank you, any questions for us?
Nope, I think that's great. That was all the same numbers I had, so we should be good.
We'll get you copies of all that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Will you tell me more?
Sure.
When are you gonna start? And what one are you gonna start at? And give me some times?
Well, first we need to...
That way I can answer questions when they go to ask it.
Yes, yes. So actually, none of those we know yet, because they didn't even know if they were gonna get the bid. So we're not on their schedule yet. So I told them it had to guarantee be done by the end of the fiscal year. So that is our only actual timeline we're working with. So she told me, as soon as I give her the go-ahead, she can schedule us on the book. And she said it wouldn't be in the next 30, 45 days to start with. But she would let me know the first available time that they can schedule us in. After I let her know today that it was approved.
Okey-dokey, that's good enough.
Yeah, but I told her it had to be done by the end of the year, so that they could apply for another re grant next year. So that was really my only guideline is gotta be done, so I can get another one.
Is there any of them worse than others? Or are they all about the same?
Um...
One more pressing?
They were, she did not think, the Winoka one was the newest. So that one was the cleanest. And you know, we could've waited. She said maybe three more years on that one. And we decided to do them all at the same time. So record-keeping in history, when we go, we all did them all at the same time. And they're all at the same date.
It seems like we've done one about two years ago.
We did the outside of one.
Well, yeah, we did the outside of them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Not the inside?
Not the inside. And that cost half as much to do the outside as it does to do the inside.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, thank you, guys.
Number 16, discussion of possible action regarding district solid waste request.
You know the three S's for request, huh?
I wanted dumpsters. That's what I get.
You guys did.
You guys all did.
Yeah, that's what I requested.
You guys did.
Yeah.
You've done dumpster?
Yeah.
And you've done emulsion after?
Any motion we approve? We got two motion. Get current options.
I'll say that, all in favor?
All right.
Number 17, approve and disapprove of banquet donation in amount of $8,467.44. The sheriff received to purchase finger printing equipment to be used at schools. And some money will be used for drug awareness programs.
Yeah, so they got, yeah.
All in favor?
That was pretty good, Matt, huh?
That is.
Good.
And their fingerprint machine did the... They knew all my kids washed in school every year.
That's kind of what they got it was for the schools.
Yeah.
Number 18, discussion of possible action regarding the surplus and junkie of clerk server ID number F249-03.
I make that motion?
The clerk server.
Yes.
Is that a computer?
Uh-huh. Well, it's the server for the computers, yeah.
I'll say that, all in favor? All right. Number 19...
Here's those papers.
Number 19, discussion of possible action regarding the CDL contract between Woods County and Billy Smith. That's my guy. Basically, he's just obligated to fulfill two years or pay us back.
You get the CDL and that thing, you're going into some kind of contract with it?
Yeah, just like we do with the police officers when you're sending them to the fleet. That covers us on the cost of whiskey for two years. I'll make a motion.
We're gonna do it out here to the boat tax?
No, we're gonna do it house to check it out. The boat taxes, $4,828.
You make the motion?
Yes. All in favor? All right. Number 20, new business.
I don't have any.
I've got two things. Apparently, Freedom Fire Department was scheduled to build a school and purchase bunker gear between a year or two years ago. It's like $15,000 or more than that to pay for it.
Just to build a bunker?
Yes. My thing is, can we pay for it? Since it's that old and it was never approved or...
How old is it?
Over a year.
Over a year.
Well, why didn't they come to us before?
I think they thought that the OSU was gonna pay for their bunker gear, but they completed it, of course. That's the...
The problem is, the course is paid. And then already...
Then they reported it and they said, no, you didn't get in in time, or you got in too late, or something. But OSU wouldn't honor what they said they was gonna do.
That's probably your dad's problem.
I mean, we bought bunker gear for them for years.
Yeah.
But that's the timing, that might be an issue.
Yeah.
And it was never approved according to even, I asked him about this.
Fire.
So would you put that on the agenda for next year?
Yes.
And the next thing is spraying of this building for bugs. I've had two local contractors that do bug spraying requests. We go out for bids on that. I guess we haven't bid in years.
No, we haven't, because it didn't go, it doesn't go over or then that we can bid it. We've got people wanting. We'll put it on our six-month bids, just like we used to, that's where it used to be at.
Do we need to run that through me? Do they need to call you?
Yeah, they need to, they need to contact my office, so that we have the...
The seven...
We can send them a packet, but...
Add it to the vendor's list, or whatever. They get a W9.
Yeah, and she's working on the six-month bids right now. So if there's anything else you guys are thinking that we need to put on there, be sure to get with us.
Put your rock on there, some range.
Red.
I'm a lot.
It's cheaper. It didn't have to, we don't have to.
Yeah, it doesn't have to, as long as it's a vendor.
It's $6.99. Anything over seven, we got a bid.
Yeah.
He's selling it to us.
And with, and with those.
So we don't have to do there.
Anything new on the water?
I got a couple of bids. We can do all that stuff without going out for bids on these fire trucks. If you guys want me to go ahead with the ski units and the light package, I will. I've kind of held off. He said he could build them for under $25,000, but I don't know that. This Costco guy, he said all of that can be on state contract too.
With the dollar on state contract?
We'll do that.
Yeah.
I mean, the manufacturer, the pumps and all that stuff, they're more useful now, you know what I mean? Just give you, it goes on the bed. I bought the beds the other day, got two of them. She's got the original ambulance or whatever. But then we'll put the ski unit on it, with the pump, the hose reel, the upper controls. It'll be just like what they got. We gotta put the man wells in it, but we'll do that in-house. They said it was gonna be about 10 weeks out for hail. And it would be a little quicker for CET. But CET pumps are made in Canada, and he didn't know about the tariffs. And I talked to Miller, and he said hail, so I'll tell him you could build hail. They have a light package as well. He thought it was about $2,000, but he said that it's on state contract price as well. This is a Costco guy that's telling me this stuff. So I'll just kind of ease along there. If I order them now, it's good, it'll be after July. I didn't know if we needed to hold off, wait, or...
I wouldn't.
Give them that. So I'll just go ahead with that. That's all I got.
What about the sewage systems?
Everything's ready to move forward. They built the permits and stuff in place, just waiting... just waiting on the rate to move out before they can actually do something in there.
Anything on yours? Any else? Got over my pneumonia, and that's all I know.
They, uh, easily sent me, um, a hundred and some thousand, I was kind of forgetting, I don't have a lot much. Invoices for, for Ellis, and then $8,000 something for him, for his percent to, to demand to, to be paid.
Yeah, in Winoka. I never heard more about the roof, or. The window. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's a city deal. Whatever you stopped to them, I mean, he, he said he was going to, so, I, I, I mean, I just don't, I don't get in our business. They seem to be making progress, so.
And I could know it on these. That we could just start, cause you're more ahead of the pay. I got that donation account, or, I don't know. I thought I'd talk to him and ask him, is he gonna have a bill that specifically is for those amounts that we got for the donation later on, or.
Oh, that bank, that, that's a little deal.
No, the, the donation was from the Winoka.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'll ask him about that and see if, if they'll be sending me one that's exactly for that, and that would be nice if they did that.
Anything else? Number 21, approve or disapprove of blanket purchases.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
22, motion to adjourn reses for re-coming.
I'll approve.
Second. All in favor?